All right. Yeah, you're muted. You are muted.
All right.
Oh, there you go. Okay, good.
There's Joe.
So I just did a quick screen share. It seems like it's working. Did you see the slideshow, Joe, when I put it up? Okay.
I was just at the National Planning Conference.
Yeah, I think Joe was there, too. You guys are quick.
It's a quick trip from Houston these days.
Yeah, a lot of money lost in Houston from all those hotel nights and restaurants.
A lot of money lost everywhere.
Thanks, that's for sure. That is for sure. Got some light at the end of the tunnel here. Hopefully, things will continue in the right direction.
Yeah, we're gonna restart construction.
Yeah, May 7th. That's a big deal for our business, right?
Yeah, well, yeah. I mean, a significant part of my department's gonna have to start working again. They've been working, but like, we're doing in-person work.
Got it. Yeah, we're busier than ever. We're slammed. It's been good. Unfortunate.
Yeah, we have some, you know, some nice redevelopment projects. Pretty much all marijuana facilities, but nonetheless, gonna improve some planted properties. And the last thing I'd want them to do is stall out because they can't proceed with construction.
Hey, are those Survey Monkey surveys posted on the website anywhere yet?
I don't think we've opened them yet because the Spanish language version is still being proofed.
Still has to be proofed, okay. All right, we'll mention that then. And I was thinking, is it best that, I mean, do you have someone that can regularly update the website on your end to add things? Or would you prefer we have a webpage with everything on it and you link just to that page?
She's hiding there, so if Michelle wants to answer that question, she's our website.
She says she doesn't have a microphone. She'll have to chat.
Oh. Maybe she could do side language for us.
Yeah. So I just wanna, yeah, if it's fine for you to just update your site and we'll send you the info.
Yeah, I think it's doable. That's probably makes the most sense. So people know where to look, you know.
She says either way is fine with her, so.
Gotcha.
Okay, well, good. Yeah, we, because I'd like to keep the, it'd be nice to have a master plan, comprehensive plan update section in the community development department where we continually can feed in some information to keep everybody abreast of what's happening.
We were just in the midst of updating our horrific website when all this happened. So that did not get accomplished yet, unfortunately. We have rather confusing website at this point. I think when he comes in, the chairman or chair, Mike Jacobitz, will kind of open the, officially open the meeting and then now either he'll introduce you or he'll ask me to introduce you. And it'll be your show from there.
Great. Hi, Megan.
Hi there. I'll probably be on mute because my keyboard is very loud, just so you guys know, so.
Okay. That's fine.
I went to my quiet place for this meeting.
Good for you. I have to, I have to share my office with my wife. She's a banker. And with all these PPP loans, she's like very, very busy.
I would think so.
So we're trying to time our conference calls during the day, so we're not having it at the same time.
Well, my wife is home, so I went, rather than force her to be quiet, I went down to my law office. And there's now, not only no one in here, there's basically no one in this entire building.
Oh, wow.
Building has been locked down ever since the shutdown.
Right.
Jeremiah's hair is coming back slowly but surely.
There we go. You hear me?
Now we can hear you.
The area.
How you doing, Jeremiah?
Good, how are you?
Great. All the way from Delaware.
Yeah.
Well, Megan's actually in Connecticut right now, so.
Mine's actually from Wayne's World.
It doesn't say Connecticut, though, on your background.
No, it does. You don't have a Connecticut sign behind you.
Speaking carpool on the way home on May 15th.
That's right. Yeah, we've got a different world coming up in the next few weeks here. See how this all plays out.
Yeah.
I don't think everything's, anything's gonna ever really be exactly the same again.
I hope not. I hope it's not exactly the same. There's been a lot of, you know, good things about this. This is a lot of, you know.
Yeah, we're saving, saving the environment.
The animals love it, you know, the meat plants are shutting down. That's great, yeah.
Fossil fuels or consumption is dropping, prices are dropping.
Yeah.
Yeah, I gotta work with those good things.
This technology is great. And in my view, it's great for these meetings.
Oh, I think so, too. I think more, more and more of them need to be this way.
Right. It offers so much easier for people. They don't got, have to go out in the cold or the rain and go down to the city chambers. You know, you just hop on your computer.
Yeah, and if you can see people and share screens and all of that, then you've really accomplished a lot.
Yeah.
Michelle says they're almost done with the design phase for the website. How are our forms coming, Jeremy?
Um, I'm starting one tomorrow.
Okay.
On my list.
Don't forget email, email addresses. Don't forget email addresses. Speaking of that, will you find the application for that that other place on Treet? One that expired and send it, send it to me so I can.
Find their.
I found, I take that back. I found their address. I don't need it.
It's, yeah, it's 11:39. It's right.
Their actual mailing address, but I found it.
Number.
Jeremiah, sometimes your chair looks like it's a little creature who kind of shows up. Like when you got up, it showed, and then when you turn a certain way, kind of looks like a special special friend joining you. She pops up behind you and.
You're gonna, you're gonna see my cat multiple times through this. I guarantee that.
I did, I did see the cat once, yes.
Yep, she'll be on top of the computer desk. There are no commissioners in here?
No, there still are.
Yeah.
They probably don't know it's open.
Oh, God, you can see like my whole room.
So do you have any of your marijuana production facilities that are under construction now? Any newer ones going in?
Yeah. I mean, we have one, the biggest one is up and running, has been for some time.
Right, I knew that.
Flourish out there. That's a, that's a new build, but we have a number of the remodels that are that are under construction and, you know. I mean, in general, like these jobs have tried to get, you know, they try to suggest that they were already done. It's like, oh, come and inspect it. We're already done. We're not building now, contrary to the, you know, to the, to the governor's order. But, you know, we're already done, so come inspect. We have, we have not done that. They weren't done. But I suspect they've been building right along. We have a big new industrial facility going into a couple of the, if you know what Ventures was. Ventures was an auto supplier that went out of business last year. They had a campus of five buildings down just south of Beecher. And then they have another building out on the west side as well. So six buildings went vacant when they went down. This company, it's called Euclid. They make patent animal supplements. Bought two of those buildings and are rehabbing them for their operations, bringing operations from Toledo up here. They're based in Blissfield. But, you know, they, they, they thought they were gonna build out in April and May and be open in June, which is absurdly ambitious under any scenario. But they tried to get, they've tried to get their lawyer to convince us that, I mean, I have not told them no, but they can't have permits. I just, you know, let them try. And I knew they wouldn't be able to get their plans together and all that. But you know, the way they, even though they are critical infrastructure business, the way the order works, through all the research we've done, such as you can do at this point, is that can't build a new one of those facilities. You can operate them. You can have tradespeople come in and repair things for your existing facility, but you can't open a new facility engage in the construction necessary to open a new facility under the order. So May 7th is gonna be a good day for a lot of reasons. So it removes that obstacle. There's Mike. Brian, Krista.
How is everyone?
Doing well. How are you?
Okay. Rod, welcome.
Yeah, thank you. How you doing, Mike?
Not too bad.
Good. Nice to see you.
Thanks. Nice to see you as well.
Here.
Brian, it says your name is Sophia. You gotta unmute yourself.
And you're muted.
I don't own a laptop.
I say, how is it, how is it, one, just a minute? There's a way to change Sophia to Brian, but I'm not sure where it is. Michelle, can you change the names on these?
Michelle can't speak. She has no microphone.
Okay, but she can hear.
She can hear us, but we can't hear her. We can see her text messages.
Okay.
I believe you should be able to go to the participants tab down at the bottom and click. And if you see your name, you should be able to click the more button and rename yourself.
Got that, Brian?
Yeah.
Yep. Okay, there we go.
All right.
Okay, there we go. It's not quite 6:30 yet, so. Well, Key Rod, that looks like an Adrian Bridge you're sitting in front of there.
It actually is.
Yeah.
That's from my, my archives. I took that back around 2006.
Yeah, yeah, that's what it looks like. Uh huh. It's still there.
I know. I tried, I drove by when I was there last time I saw you guys. So it's still there. It's beautiful. So, Michael?
Don?
Yeah. I played around with some background yesterday at a meeting and they're still learning how to get rid of it, so.
You gotta go, go over to the little arrow by the video emblem in the lower left-hand corner. And then choose virtual backgrounds and select, and select the black one. Because as it is, you're oh. Feel, there you go.
Sorry about that. Ah, there we go, yeah.
Oh, let's see.
What do we do now?
Trying to see. Are we missing any commissioners? Let's see. One, two, three, four, five.
Forgot all mine.
Six, seven, eight, nine.
That's Nancy.
No, no, Nancy's here.
Is she?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
We've got everyone. Um, it's still, well, it's 6:30 according to my computer. Um, in which case we'll call. in which case we'll call to order this special meeting of the City of Adrian Planning Commission. Our purpose this evening is, we have sole agenda item, and that is to kind of kick off our work on the comprehensive plan. I see we have folks with us from Giffords Webster, our consultants, they're Joe and Rod and Megan. I will leave it to you folks to introduce yourselves, if you don't mind.
Absolutely.
And then turn the meeting over to you, I would offer first, just as a reminder to everyone, we have our regularly scheduled planning, monthly planning commission meeting next Tuesday at 7 o'clock, also via Zoom, and there'll be a link coming out for that probably later this week, so with that said, Giffords Webster folks, meeting's yours for the moment.
Great, thank you so much, Mr. Chair, it's great to see everyone, and we're happy to kick off this update to your comprehensive plan. So we prepared a PowerPoint presentation, so I think what I want to do is I'm gonna share my screens, so just bear with me for a second, and I'm gonna get this up and running, and I will see you in just one second here with that. Okay, can you see that?
There we go.
Yep.
Good, all right, excellent, okay, so I'm gonna go ahead and take us through the slideshow here, so. Get it to advance, hold on, there we go, all right, so I'm gonna start off this brief agenda, I'm gonna start off with the introduction of our team, we're gonna talk a little bit about the scope of the project as well as the timeline, and talk a little bit about some of the information we've already discovered, the basically our profile of existing conditions, and then we're gonna talk about strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and we have a exercise, you've already had some, we've had participation in, and we have a little bit more to do as part of what we're doing this evening, and then just discussing our future open house and other approaches to public input. So, our firm is a Michigan-based firm, we're multi-disciplinary, and we include civil engineering, planning, land surveying, and much more, landscape architecture, GIS mapping, we provide professional services to a wide variety of clients, including public, private, and institutional clients. Burchler Royal Associates, which was the firm that did your last master plan, comprehensive plan, also known as Clearzoning, that firm became part of Giffords Webster in 2016, so I was fortunate to lead the last preparation of your comprehensive plan, working with the planning commission, and I'm very pleased to be working with you once again on updating that plan, so it's exciting to do follow-up work and also to see some of the progress that you've made since we prepared that last plan. So our team, I'll start off with myself and a brief introduction, as you know, I was involved with your last comprehensive plan. I have a master's degree in city planning from Georgia Tech, and I've been a certified planner for many, many, many years, working mostly in southeast Michigan, my career started in Florida, but I've been in Michigan since 1986, I've been here quite a long time, so I'm gonna let Joe Tangeri introduce himself, he's a senior planner.
Thanks. Good evening, everyone, nice to meet you all. Yes, I, I got my master of urban planning from Wayne State University in Detroit, and I've been a certified planner for several years now. I've been with Rod for a little over six years, worked on master plans for quite a few communities in southeast Michigan, as well as a lot of zoning ordinances and quite a few other things, I currently work for about 10 communities, all told, in various capacities, and I'm looking forward to, to helping you out with your plan.
Great, Sri Kamar Gary is also a senior planner, I don't know, was Sri able to join us?
Hi, I'm here.
She was not tonight.
Oh, hi, yeah, hi, there she is, hi Sri, go ahead and do an introduction of yourself.
Hi, I'm Sri, I just joined Giffords like a month ago, but I worked with City of Nowai as the senior planner for five years, and I'm excited to join the team and Adrian's my first master plan, and I've enjoyed reading the history and I'm excited to see where, what the future plan's gonna be, thank you.
Thank you, Sri, and then Megan Cunio, staff planner, Megan.
Hi, everybody, my name's Megan Cunio, I'm new to the Giffords Webster team, I joined back in January, and I'm also getting my masters in urban planning from Wayne State, I actually, actually technically graduate tomorrow, so I'll be finished up with that, and I'm excited to work on a lot of the background documents as well as the research for the plan, so, and I'm excited to come visit Adrian as soon as it's nice weather, take lots of pictures and all that fun stuff.
Okay, great, and then Howard Cohen is not on with us this evening, he's, but he's already started work, he's a partner with the Chesapeake group, and they are primarily assisting us with the market assessment and economic development plan component of this comprehensive plan update, so we've had a number of staff calls, and he's busy analyzing data already, and he'll be conducting some interviews, and we'll kind of go through his scope briefly as I go through the rest of the presentation. So I think it's a good idea always to start off with an overview of what a comprehensive plan is, because comprehensive plan is a little different from the normal work a planning commission is working on with development reviews and zoning organs work, comprehensive plan has a long-range vision for the future of the community. It's gonna serve as a guide for how the city can become the place it strives to be, so what it wants to be when it grows up, kind of that way, or as it evolves over the years, and then it provides a framework in making big-picture decisions, directs development into different areas of the community so that the uses are in the right places, and then it promotes and strengthens valued community assets, and it encourages new partnerships and opportunities. So let's go through a summary of the scope of work. So we're estimated the timeline to complete this scope is about 12 to 15 months. Sometimes this can go faster, sometimes it gets slowed down depending upon a variety of factors, obviously COVID-19 is a challenging scenario that we've really never faced in recent current times, and it's, it could have an impact on, on what happens, but we're, we're finding ways to, to work around and become adaptable to this particular situation, so we'll talk about some of the opportunities we have for public input that may be different from things we've done in the past, but we're gonna try to stick to that timeline, and if possible, we'll even shorten it up a little bit if everything goes according to our desired plan. We are already a good month, month and a half into the work scope, because we've been working on, on, on the project and doing work, so tonight's not the very beginning, this is really just a kickoff of the planning commission, and which is extremely important to the work we're doing, and then we're actually, we'll be able to present some of the findings we have so far. So, the, the beginning of the process involves preparing a lot of notices, there are specific notices that have to go to adjacent communities and to other entities, we also look at existing plans that have been developed since the last comprehensive plan, because you've done a lot of smaller sub-area plans and focus plans, we also look at existing conditions and do, start developing the community profile, so all of that is underway, so the notice of intent has been created, we've been doing the summaries and of the other plans that have been created, and we've been analyzing existing conditions, demographics, and the like, and so we're gonna report some of that tonight. And then as we move into the kickoff meeting that we're having this evening, that gives us an opportunity to get your input and help set our direction, and then we're also gonna try to establish some target dates. We're working with our GIS department, our mapping department, to create the maps that we need, and then obviously, once we're able to get past our stay-at-home order here, we'll be able to come get out to the city and spend some more time assessing existing conditions and taking some photographs to update the photographs we did last time. Public input is ongoing through the process, it really is, it never stops until the public hearing, but the vast majority of the public input, we try to do upfront before we actually are planning, because we wanna hear the public input prior to actually crafting plans. So, the market assessment survey is live, it's not posted yet because we're just wrapping up the Spanish language translation, but there's gonna be an English and a Spanish language version of the survey that's primarily gonna be used to inform the market assessment that the Chesapeake group is doing. We anticipate that that's gonna be live within the next few days, and once it is, it actually is live now, but it hasn't been posted, it will be posted, I'm sure you will begin emails, and then it will also be posted on the city's website, and hopefully on some of the social media channels that'll get out there, and we wanna encourage as many people as possible in the community to fill out the survey, so as soon as it's live and you know about it, and you've got the link, please share that with all of the people that you know that either have businesses or work within the community, so that we can start to get that input. Another public input process that is something we've developed and used many times that we really like is called Picture This, and it's actually an app, and it can be done using a computer, but actually it works really well from a smartphone, so we like that because not everybody has a computer, but a pretty high percentage of the population has a smartphone, and with that app, which we'll show you in a minute, you're able to actually take pictures of things you like, or maybe think need a little work within the community, and you can upload that picture and tag it to a specific spot on the map, and then you can actually provide some written comments, so you may see something that you find in another community you'd like to have within Adrian, and you could take a picture of that or find a picture of that on, on the internet, and then upload that to a spot within Adrian where you think it might be appropriate, or you could find something that you think maybe needs some work, and you could take a picture of that and say, look, we need to really improve this in our community, so it, it allows for both creative, new ideas to come, as well as recognizing things within the community that maybe can be improved. There's also going to be a separate public input survey that's not market-based, that's not based on the market assessment, that'll come a couple of months from now, likely, we're gonna wait for the market assessment survey to get some traction before we do that second survey. That'll be more broad-based, more land use-based. The current market assessment survey asks a lot of questions about spending patterns and shopping patterns. The other one will be a little bit more land use and non-motorized transportation focused, for example. And then we plan to have a, probably the biggest event portion of getting public input, it is a public open house, similar to what we did last time, and this is really more of a, an open house where people can come over an extended period of time. Typically, it's two hours to two and a half hours long, people can come and actually talk and see exhibits and hear a brief presentation, fill out short questionnaires, and really have an opportunity to provide input, now, we recognize that our world is changing, and we have no idea if everything is going to enable us to have an open house, or what that might look like, so we do have some electronic options, we are currently working on a master plan update for the city of Madison Heights, and we're doing their open house virtually, it's gonna be online, and it's gonna have opportunities for for people to get their opinions out there, and so it's a really great opportunity for public input. So we're gonna show, we can show you a brief demonstration of that if necessary. And then stakeholder meetings for market assessment and economic development strategy, that's gonna be occurring. Sometimes those are, we like to do those face-to-face if we can, given the scenario, they may be occurring by phone, but this is where certain stakeholders in the community, primarily business owners and some residents as well, will be interviewed and get specific so we can get some ideas on trends and kind of get the pulse of the economy within the city, so those, those interviews will be conducted by Howard Cohen as part of this process, and so stay tuned for the actual format and way those are gonna take place, because once again, we're waiting to see how things evolve over the next two weeks to 30 days in terms of where the executive orders are heading. This is the Picture This interactive tool, you can see there is a link to this, I'm gonna see if I can get this to work by clicking on it, I don't know if it'll work in this format, it might not, no, probably won't, okay, so this is the link, this will be posted on the city's website, and it will probably also be sent out to you via email, and this provides an opportunity, essentially you see a screen like this, and then you click a participate button, and you are able to actually upload pictures and provide comments, so when we're done with this slideshow, I might be able to do a presentation of that for you. So the market, oops, I went the wrong way, okay, so this is an example of the slide from the Madison Heights Master Plan Open House I talked about, indicating that they were not able to do an in-person public input using the Vision Fair Open House format, and so we went through and actually set it up so they can do it online, so if we get to the point where that seems like it might be the way we're heading, we will do a demo of that and find a way to make that work for your open houses, but that's the way we need to go. So then we're gonna, once we're done with the existing conditions, the analysis of the existing plans, and we get through public input sessions, at least those initial open house and survey sessions, then we'll be meeting with the planning commission to review a draft of goals, objectives, and strategies, these will help set the tone for the master plan. After that, we'll be getting into the future land use plan and the zoning plan. Future land use plan includes that all-important future land use map, which establishes city development goals for each area of the city, and then the zoning plan describes how the future land use classifications relate to the existing zoning districts and identify potential zoning changes that might be necessary in order to ensure that the ordinance is consistent with what the goals and objectives and the implementation actions that have been identified in the comprehensive plan. Also, there's going to be redevelopment-ready sites, so we're gonna be identifying particular locations as part of the economic development strategy that hopefully will be studied to the point where we have some concepts in place for redevelopment, so that we can share in the master plan and the economic development plan what the vision is for the city for those particular sites, and hopefully foster the future redevelopment of those sites in line with the city plan. As part of the economic development plan and marketing strategy, there will be a market assessment and analysis, I mentioned the survey is live and it's gonna be connection, links to that will be released soon. The scope includes an analysis of property trends and patterns, it includes analysis of the labor force, trying to better define under, underemployment, that we find that by actually conducting surveys throughout the community, you get a better handle of what the real gaps are in unemployment, underemployment, and then most importantly, forecasting, doing a demand forecast for retail, office, industrial, and residential land uses. And then the economic development program is gonna be a strategic implementation-oriented economic development program that is gonna be developed as part of this particular scope, we'll be developing goals and objectives specifically centered around economic development. There'll be methods and strategies for motivating property owners, recruitment and retention program elements, elements to foster entrepreneurship, and conceptual marketing plan, or if necessary, adjustments to current marketing efforts in order to implement the recommendations in the plan. And then finally, the implementation section includes implementation actions, and we'll end up having a progress meeting with the planning commission to review these draft findings and the recommendations. Following that, we start to move towards the adoption process, so the plan does have to be sent out for, for comments from adjacent communities as well as certain other entities, so that those will in fact be sent out once those comments are received over a roughly, depending on whether we wanna do it as a shorter 42 or 63-day period, the minimum is the 42 days when you're doing an update, and you can extend it out to 63 if you want, if you consider this to be a more substantial amendment, and then essentially, once that period is passed, then you would be able to hold a public hearing at the planning commission level, and the planning commission would then move forward to adopt the plan, and then And then send it on to the city council and city council also can adopt the plan as well. And so we would expect that both, and usually the council, I believe, is going to take that option. It is optional, but the planning commission would adopt the plan, the city council would also adopt the plan. And then it would include that public hearing that would take place at the planning commission level. So, yes, and then the other component of that is preparing the final document. And then transmitting the plan. And then we propose to include an online story map of the comprehensive plan, which is essentially an executive summary. That is interactive, that can live on your website. And it would enable you to scroll through and actually click on interactive maps. And also see important plan recommendations. It's a really excellent way of sharing the summary of the master plan. So some of the work in progress, I'm going to turn it over to Joe Tangeri. And he's going to walk us through some of the findings of the information that we've collected today.
Okay, thank you. I guess you can just advance the slides so we don't have to switch screens and everything. All right, so we're just going to hit a couple small points from the, the first chapter of the plan. Just talking about the existing conditions in the city. So you have about 20,000 residents as of 2018. That's down from 2020. That's not particularly uncommon in Michigan for a community that's primarily built out. To experience a modest decline in population over the last 10 or so years, given that household size is declining. And your median, Rod, if you can move along. Your median age is very similar to the statewide average. You do have a large portion of your population that's in or approaching the family creation phase of life by age. Much of that large concentration in the 19 to 25 age range is due to the presence of the colleges. So that's something that we have to always factor in when we're talking about any given statistic. In the city and it'll be kind of a recurring theme with the next few slides. You generally have smaller households in the surrounding communities. The college certainly plays something of a role, the colleges, sorry, certainly play something of a role in that. Though, in general, it seems like the, the more rural townships in the area. Have in general, larger household sizes. So that's something that we have to think about when we're planning for housing in the future. And it's also something that we have to think about when we, when we think about how our community works. The school district, smaller houses generally correspond, smaller households generally correspond to. Fewer children entering the school system. Can move along, thank you. So, when you compare it to surrounding communities. The city of Adrian has a relatively lower. Rate of educational attainment and a lower median household income. And while these are things that certainly require attention, I mean, certainly the high school graduation rate is something you'd like to be higher. A portion of that disparity is due to the student population. You see this a lot in college towns where the median household income. Is considerably lower than other peer communities, simply because of the concentration of students. Or at least it's a major factor in, in the disparity in household income. Because you do have a lot of, a lot of students who live alone and don't really have much of an income at all. So they kind of appear under poverty. So another thing that we, we felt was important to highlight. Given the, the current situation where we are doing so much online is that we do have a quarter of households that lack internet access. That's, that's at the house, some of those households may have the presence of a smartphone that they can use to get online. We do have an 85% of households that have a computer. Again, a lot of those households that don't have a computer probably do have a smartphone in them now. But those were just some of the things that we wanted to highlight this evening. So, when we do these kickoffs, we like to do these, these SWOT exercises, strengths, weaknesses and opportunities. We'd like to thank you all for answering the questions that we sent in advance, which addressed weaknesses and opportunities. We're actually sharing the answers with you right now. So, we started with a more general question. And what are three ways in which you'd like Adrian to be different in 2040? Well, no one answered with the exact same words. You can see some themes that kind of poke up. Through the overall results. And, you know, some, a lot of them point to aesthetics and sustainability. You can see cleaner yards there, that points to aesthetics and visually attractive also points to aesthetics. So I think, I think in general, it seems like the planning commission is mostly thinking in the same direction. You're looking to, to be progressive and innovative. You're looking for a more walkable community. You're looking for a visually appealing community. And you're looking for a prosperous community with a, with a strong business environment. That's, this is, that's a good place to live. So trying to think outside the current crisis, which, you know, it's, it's pretty hard. I understand everybody's dealing with it in their own way. But we, we wanted you to think about what you believe is the number one threat to Adrian's prosperity over the next 20 years. That's the T in SWOT. So poverty, unemployment, underemployment, lack of jobs and inequality. Short sighted. Short sighted, simple minded people who rely on the past to solve problems. Declining population resulting in loss of tax base. Value of property and loss of jobs. So employment is a pretty consistent theme. Not having the ability to have provisions that allow flexibility in specific uses of sites, encouraging overall revitalization. And continued economic growth in the city. So that's in dealing with how your ordinances interact with the ability of people to, to do their projects. Cities tax base greatly diminished due to a number of governmental, educational and nonprofit properties not paying property taxes. Creating opportunities for investment and good paying professional jobs is a top priority for prosperity. So, yes, obviously, employment is where a lot of, a lot of people's minds go. We think about prosperity for a community. But in general, you know, I see, I see some hints of wanting to be sure that. Whatever prosperity the, the community does enjoy in the future is a shared prosperity. And not concentrated among a small portion of the population. And then addressing strengths. Again, as with the, the first set of results here that we, that we just showed. We, we see some common threads. The, the, the community's kind of pretty rich history and that shows up in these results. Obviously, the educational institutions that are part of the community are a source of strength. Proximity to larger urban areas, but you're not a large intense urban area yourself. I think there's a general sense among the members of the planning commission that there's a lot of potential that. Arts and culture could be a source of future strength and that. Involved citizenry is important to, to moving forward in a way that. As I hinted earlier, is equitable for the whole community. So we addressed the S in the T in SWOT and tonight we wanted to address the. The W in the O, weaknesses and opportunities. So we're going to send you back to that same application that we. We sent you to earlier. And I guess everybody can just let us know if you're having trouble accessing it, but otherwise. Rod, how much time would you like to, to provide for people to, to answer?
Why don't we, why don't we five, five minutes, how's that doing?
Okay. So if everyone could just go there and start to fill that out and I will. I've got the, I can watch the results as they come in, so I will go there now.
So Joe? I'm unable to get mentee.com to open up on my computer.
Okay, well, let's see.
Try www.mentee.com and see if that makes a difference.
How do you want me to enter that, I'm sorry?
Enter it as www.mentee.com.
I understand what you're saying, where do I enter that? I've got a screen that says, go to mentee.com.
Oh, oh, right, getting out of the.
Oh, to get out of the presentation. Oh, so you could do it on, if you have a smartphone, you can do it on there. If you can bring up your browser on your smartphone and just do it off of your phone.
I do, but I'm online with my laptop, so.
Under, under view options up at the very top of the screen, you should see something that says view options. You should be able to exit full screen and access a browser that way. Do you see the exit full screen option?
I'm, I'm still, I'm, I'm, I'm not full screen and I'm still not getting it to open.
Press escape, Don.
Pardon me?
Press escape, see if that works.
No. Count me out on this one.
Let's see.
What the hell's happening now? Sri, I'm not on the phone, I'm on my laptop.
Okay.
I was just trying to see what the option is for you. If you're on the laptop, there should be like a square, which is not pure square at the top right corner.
I'm sorry, I'm not hearing you.
Oh, one moment. If you're on the laptop, there should be a square on the top right corner, an, an, an icon.
If he hovers over himself, what are you talking about?
Like.
Well, there's one that says enter full screen and.
Exit full screen, yes. If you exit full screen, then you can minimize, then you, you'll get the option to minimize, maximize or close. So you minimize and you can go to website.
Yeah, you should, if you're, if you're out of full screen, you should be able to access other applications.
Well, you know, folks, it's not working, so everybody else do it. I can do something later, okay?
Okay.
Yeah, what we can do is we'll, we'll share the questions with you through an email and then we'll have your input.
Rod and Greg, if it's okay, I can share my screen and people can start to see the results here.
Perfect. Okay, I stopped sharing, so you should.
Can you see that?
Yes.
Okay. So you're starting to see the results to the first question pop up here.
All right, are we ready to move to the next one?
Looks like a few things have been added. Let's let that populate a little bit more. People making their way through.
So everybody had an opportunity to fill in all the answers?
Yes, clarification, are these different questions than the ones we asked, answered prior to the meeting?
Yes, they're, they're, they kind of have a similar tone, but they are different, yep.
So it does look like we have one that's definitely getting the most results in terms of the weaknesses and that's blight.
Yes.
So clearly standing out.
And it goes hand in hand with a few of the other things that I see here. Physical infrastructure. I think when people perceive physical infrastructure to be. In poor condition, incentives to work on their own property perhaps drop, so.
Dwindling economic resources is part of that as well.
Yes, exactly, yeah.
This is an awfully small sample to be drawing any conclusions from, I would say.
Well, that's true, Mike, but it, what it does is it gives us kind of the, the insight from the planning commission. This is really just the beginning of the process. And we'll be able to reach out and get the whole community and see how much different it is. But it, at least it allows us to hear the thoughts of the planning commission upfront.
Okay.
Yeah, this is really just the beginning, believe me, there will be a lot more input coming your way.
And I think the planning commission has a unique position to view the lay of the land. So we like to get the, their opinion upfront. And it gives us some direction as to what to investigate when we do a broader public engagement.
And it's, a lot of it is just really starting to get you thinking about all of these issues. We're kicking off the process, but now you've had, you've been able to share your ideas. And now you've seen what other planning commissioners are thinking as well. And now you can start thinking about how you. And now you can start thinking about how you feel about those ideas and then it might inform your thoughts. And it, it's really just part of a process of, of, of getting you thinking about planning and planning related issues. And hopefully those will be in, in, in front of your mind as much as possible as you go through your day to day life and can bring you, put you in a position to best share more information and more ideas as we go through this process.
Sure. So on the other question about the promising opportunities. It looks like arts and culture, marijuana, community and colleges are the ones that got the most, you know, common answer, but sense of community and people, those both play into community. Obviously, local institutions and college both play into the colleges. Downtown development came up, downtown investments. I think we can see some pretty obvious themes here. You know, clearly marijuana is a brand new economic opportunity that the community has embraced and the arts and culture and entertainment go hand in hand with each other. And when you're the largest talent in your region, you can become the magnet for those kinds of things.
Yeah, in 2006, we certainly saw several of these, including the colleges and, and the arts and culture, but we didn't see marijuana.
Marijuana may have been on the other list last.
On the other list, yeah, things have changed. And that's, that's why we keep updating our plans.
Rod, I'll give you back the screen now.
Okay. Okay, so next steps over the next few months, we're going to be gathering the public input. We've talked about continuing our analysis, having periodic meetings with the planning commission, the public input, open house, once we decide about that format. So at this point, really just want to turn it over to, back to the planning commission for comments and questions. I guess we would be interested to see, at least on a preliminary basis, what your thoughts are about the entire concept of an open house and whether or not you want to just try to plan for a virtual open house or if you want to wait and see 30 days from now to see what's happening with the executive order and where things are going in terms of the ability to actually meet. I mean, we don't have to make a decision tonight about it, but I'm just curious what your general thoughts are.
Rod?
Yes.
Don Taylor here. I have a question. I'm going to go back a ways. You seem to incorporate all the students that are at the colleges here in our numbers. Are you saying that our population of 20,000 some odd people includes those students?
It, it really depends upon how people fill out the census questionnaire. And it depends on the type of student, actually. In, in theory, if you are an undergraduate student who is coming to town to go to school and you live somewhere else, your place of residence should have been reflected in your hometown. Okay. But what also happens is sometimes people go to college and they end up establishing an apartment. And then they get a census question and sometimes they'll fill it in as if they're a resident there. So I think we have a very, and if you're in graduate school, that becomes even more critical. Often, quite often you're, you, you think of your place as your residence. So I think the numbers tend to get skewed a little bit and I think we don't always have a great handle. It depends on the ability of the census person filling out the census form to answer it in, in a proper manner. And I, I think we get mixed results, to be honest with you. It really, it really shouldn't reflect those typical undergraduate students that are just coming there to go to school and go back. They should be listed under, when their parent fills out the census form, they should be including them in the census. And like I noticed when I filled out the census this time, I have a daughter away at college and it actually had, you had the opportunity to actually say, is one of the persons in your household attending college? And that was, you could identify that, but they would be shown as a resident of the hometown.
Yeah, so clearly if those students are included and their income is very low, it, it just sort of is an anomaly here. It really impacts our overall.
It does.
Average income, median income, et cetera. Yeah, so.
It could have some impact on that if they end up getting included as residents. Yes.
With regards to public comment meetings, I think we probably need, should take a wait and see attitude on that. I'd hate to make a decision right now to commit ourselves to either an online or, you know, public open house and find that the circumstances have changed 45 days from now.
Agreed.
I'm not sure that, as much as I appreciate Zoom, I'm not sure that this is the most effective way to hold a public open house. And so it holds out hope that we could have a, some manner of a, of a public meeting. But let's take a wait and see.
I have a, I have a question for Greg. Greg, is the city, now, there's a couple of different things in play. And I just know this from the healthcare perspective. Now, the governor has their own set of orders, but is the city in terms of holding meetings also looking at the CDC recommendations? Or the number of people allowed in gatherings or are they just following the governor's orders?
Well, we've taken the position for now that we're not allowed to hold gatherings like that. And, and that, and we've been utilizing the virtual medium, which we're authorized to do through May 12th. You know, the last time we held a meeting, we, which was a city commission meeting, we did try to enact social distancing measures. That was, that was before the shutdown. You know, and it was possible to do that, that we ended up having an individual come in who had to use barrier free entrance and it kind of thwarted the scheme of where everybody was supposed to be, but I don't know if that gets to your question or not.
Well, I just wondered, even if she, if she does lift her orders of stay at home and says, okay, everyone six feet apart, but the CDC still says no more than 10 or even 50 people at that point. And we expect, I don't know how many people, more than 50 people at these meetings, you would hope. But the CDC says no more than 50, what would, would you follow the CDC recommendation or?
Yeah, and so, you know, this, these things I think will be sorted out as we decide how to open up. But in, in similar settings, for example, right now with, with, with grocery stores and such, they are limited to a certain occupancy and what ends up happening, and this wouldn't be great for an open house or a public meeting, but what ends up happening is you have to police the number of people that can come into the, into the, that will come inside, now come into the event, or in that case, come into the store so that you are assured that the spacing will be correct. You know, I had the, I went into my neighborhood grocery store the other day and they told me to get out because like I was the, you know, nth person in. And so I wasn't allowed to be at the store. You wouldn't want to try to conduct an open house that way.
Right.
You know, although in my experience, if you got, you know, if you've got 50 people coming to an open house, that would be a lot.
Yeah, I was gonna say, based on our experience from 15 or 20 years ago, that won't be that big of an issue.
Right, but there's a hope, but.
Yes, yeah, I mean, one would hope, but, and, and there's also ways and maybe one of the consultant folks could weigh in on this, there's ways to do, you know, charrette type of, of, of public meetings or open houses too, where it's not just one huge mass gathering where, where people are spread around a room too. So it's all possible, it's all possible.
What I would throw out of thought here, I've been involved in several Zoom meetings in the last week with the county and they've averaged between 80 and 100 people on the Zoom calls. And you know, if you get 100 people in a room, only 20 of them are going to say something anyway, if you're a real, real person. So maybe Zoom is not all that bad. Just, yes, if we have to, I think that's a way to go because people are getting very, very comfortable with Zoom.
Like I said, my, my only suggestion is that we keep our options open for, at the time being, so.
I think that's a good plan.
Yeah, it's not going to hurt the, the timeline of the project to punt on that decision for now.
Exactly, exactly.
Rod, the score and Gauss. Would it be possible, maybe you give Gregory a copy of this PowerPoint presentation so it can be distributed out to us? Be good to be able to look back on it and refer to it from time to time.
True, absolutely.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Gregory, you'd be amenable to distributing that to us?
Sure. Recording of this meeting will also be saved, but I'll, I'll distribute the PowerPoint to the planning commission as soon as I get it from Rod.
Thank you.
And what we can do is we'll, we get it to you in PDF form and then we could actually end up having that posted on the website if we want the public to be able to see it and go through it and make you a good idea.
Good, thanks.
Okay, what, what next, Rod?
So at this point, that, we're just, any other ideas that you want to share, we're here to listen. We're, we're, like I said, we're going to continue forward with the preparation of the existing conditions analysis. I would expect that sometime within the next 30 days, you're going to see a draft coming your way of those first few chapters where we have the regional setting, history and existing conditions. And you're going to see some of the data you saw tonight plus additional information. And we will get that out to you and then we'll make sure, obviously Greg will get that distributed to you and you can start to review it and direct your, any comments you have through Greg and he will get them back to us. So that would be the, the, the process. And then we will continue to maintain contact with, with Greg and staff about how the, how the, how things are looking in terms of public input possibilities. And we'll probably be having some additional communications with you regarding that. And then you're also beginning the email links with the market assessment, public survey, and then the picture this for online virtual tool. And so we would like for you to then distribute those out to your friends and your colleagues that you think are interested in the community and ask them to participate. Because when you get a personal invitation from someone to do a survey, they're much more likely to do it. Like a friend of mine sent me a survey and said, hey, please, I really appreciate if you take a few minutes to do this. I'm more likely to do it than to just get a random survey. We get bombarded with surveys all the time. So we're going to hope that once you have the link, you will then distribute it to folks of, that you think in the community, a wide variety of interests. We want to hear from everyone. And if you could do your best to disseminate that, put it on your social media channels, find ways to get it out into the community. We're really hoping to have several hundred people respond to it.
Planning commissioners, I had distributed to you earlier today, a, just a, a list of some issues that I consider relevant or important for us to take, to include in a comprehensive plan and would encourage you all to do, think in similar veins and share those with the fellow commissioners. And I will see that they either get to Greg or get to, that probably through Greg and then hopefully to the Giffel Webster folks. Encourage commissioners to do the same.
Craig forwarded yours to us earlier today too, so we appreciate that.
Okay.
Hey, Mike, on that list of things, I noticed that you had vacant and soon to be vacant properties and the YMCA was listed. I was under, under the, the impression that that building has been purchased and is going to be occupied.
Oh, excellent, excellent.
You know about that, Greg?
I, yeah, I've heard about it from Dusty.
Well, he'd be the one to tell you. Yeah, there's, supposedly there's a company in DeComse that's moving to Adrian.
Right, well.
30 jobs. That's what I.
Additional facility, I think.
Well, there you go.
Yeah. Okay, any other business that we need to conduct this evening?
We're all set on our.
Okay. Folks of from Giffel's lecture, nice to meet all of you, the ones we hadn't met before. Thank you for being with us. Anybody else from the community that was with us? We're glad you were here as well. Planning commissioners, we will meet again on Tuesday at seven and I suspect that staff will get out a link to a Zoom meeting for that. Michelle Dewey, thank you for hosting this evening. If there's nothing else, then we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Good night. Great evening, everyone.
Happy giving.